Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
It's already October the 10th. Y'all believe how fast this year has gone by? I mean, Wes, didn't we just start out back in January like yesterday?
Yes, sir.
It seems like it was anyway. But anyways, it's about nine oh eight, I believe, according to the internet watch. And this regular meeting, Michigan Court of Liberty County, Texas. We had this for the court this morning. Let the record show that Commissioner Karabowski is here. Commissioner Arthur, Commissioner Whitmire is here. And Commissioner Wilson is with us by way of zoom. Thank you, Leon. Can you hear us okay?
I can hear you fine, brother.
Good, good deal. Okay. All right, so with calling the meeting in order this morning, if y'all would all rise, Chambers is going to lead us in the pledges or flags?
Yes. Please face the American flag.
I pledge to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please face the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag. I pledge to the Texas.
This morning, Pastor George Finney is here this morning. Pastor, if you would please come up here and join us and offer some implication this morning. Please, sir.
Thank you, Judge. Father, we come to you in Jesus. First of all, we thank you for each and every person gathered here today. Father, we thank you today that egos and agendas are cast aside to do what's best. Father, we thank you that your will be done. Because we know that with your will, with you, all things are possible. And we know that going against you is like swimming upstream because you open doors that no man can shut, and you shut doors nobody can open. Father, so we ask for wisdom and knowledge for each and every person here to govern this county diligently and proficiently. Father, we thank you for all these things, and Jesus, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. All right, notices and proclamations. Did we get any proclamations today? We proclaimed a whole bunch this past weekend, so.
They want to.
Yeah, okay. All right, public comment. I'm sorry?
One notice.
Yes.
Today's the last day to register to vote for the November 7th election, the special election, as well as the Cleveland SD bond election, EST number two tax election, concrete management district 1A tax election, and the mud tin tax election. And early voting starts October 23rd.
Would you care to elaborate somewhat on the ESD two tax election?
ESD two has a proposition to raise their tax, their sales tax rate one percent. I'm sorry, one cent.
One cent.
I got a percent on the brain, one cent.
Yeah.
Is what I believe theirs is. Now, the mud districts, I'd have to look at them again, but theirs are property related, I believe.
Brother Rick, if you would, I know you've researched this quite a bit on that, that one penny side of it all. That's, that's money that's laying out on the table, correct?
Sir, I don't really get into sales tax too much.
Mm-hmm.
Property tax, I can tell you all about.
Sure.
The one penny, I think the ESD, you know, they have a cap unless they have to go to the public to increase it. So I think knowing my truth and taxation stuff, that's something they've got to go capture, you know, with the public's approval.
Right.
But as far as anything more than that, I just, it's just the form, you know, when you do their truth of taxation, say, now let's say you do with their own board directors versus their charter. And then over and above that, add it to the public. And I think this, this is what trips that, that is going above their.
Right.
Their, what they were chartered to do, or what they, you know, what was written down. So that's as much as I know about, Judge.
Yeah, it, basically, it was explained to me years ago, and maybe I've forgotten more than I should really remember about it. But yet, you know, there's 8.75% tax, sales tax for the state of Texas. And there is, for the county, sales tax is set at what, 6%?
0.5.
How much?
0.5.
0.5? It says, okay. So anyway, there's this extra that's laying out there that, you know, claim, I think the state claims it, correct? I mean, that's the way I look at it. And it is that entity's right to claim that should they so desire, which in this case would offset or potentially offset their adware taxation.
As it is right now, the city of Cleveland collects that and the county. So when we do the calculations for the truth of taxation, we actually do an adjustment on the rate by taking the sales tax that's generated. So ESD, that same, same deal. And again, that half a cent that we used to talk about when we were on the.
Yes, yeah.
Board, that's just out there. You get it back into your, to your coffers. It's, so I understand that part of it, which if it applies to same Z non-development, yes, it is out there that the state would keep it versus coming back into the community.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, this would, this measure failed, what, two years ago? And simply because I think the education aspect behind it showed that it was, it's a tax. It's a new tax. And it was more or less, everybody was thinking, oh, we're going to be taxed another penny, you know, but no.
It actually.
Yeah, it's actually laying there kind of like, you got lucky and shot a good dove. It landed right there in the middle of the, right at the foot of your chair, and you can reach down there and pick it up, you know.
Lucky if I could get it.
Well, same here. I never had a good bird dog, to tell you the truth. Anyway, that's kind of the way you look at it. But it, it's something for the public to consider and look at if they won't be able to potentially reduce their adware taxation, they could take this measure.
ESDs always come in, you know, when we're talking about the rates, they always come in and say, hey, we, costs have gone up, we need to do something more, but we're stuck at just three cents or something like that.
Right.
Of course, fortunately, the values have gone up most of the areas, so they're able to, you know, stay under that. But if they really want to do something over and above, they, they're pretty well stuck with that. You know, that three, three and a half cent increase.
So hopefully, people will take the opportunity to read up on this and see if it, it fits the bill for them. And hopefully, they will.
And to follow up, as Mr. Chambers said also, that, you know, the Constitutional Convention, there's 14 amendments in it.
Right.
And quite honestly, if you want to do something to reduce your taxes, you know, Prop 4 actually carries the $100,000 home state exemption on those taxes.
Will that create a problem for you down the road?
No, no, because the state, my understanding, and I haven't verified this 100%, but I was wondering, you know, you're taking away some money from the schools. How did you keep them from, you know, burning down the capital? And basically, they did a offset. They took the reserve and they put it to the school, to offset the school, what they had given up in the exemption. So really, the money didn't go to the exemption, it went to the schools. My understanding is, again, that's kind of an interpretation. I've gone through about three or four of these meetings to try to explain some of the big changes. So really, the schools aren't losing any of this revenue because they're the ones that are getting the hit on it.
Right.
You know, the home state exemption only applies to the school tax, you know. So if they're going to raise yours from 40,000 to 100,000 on your home state, you know, that money's not coming into the, to the school's coffers. But my understanding is they were offset by how much the state contributed straight to the school.
Right.
To offset that.
Right. Might be a windfall.
Yeah, it is. I mean, and we've already, when we sent out the tax statements this year, we took from the account the 100,000 exemption. So if you see another tax statement coming in, that means it failed, then you have to pay a little more tax. Hopefully, that, hopefully, people get out and support it. This is something that anyone that has home state, and then they've also put a cap on some of the other evaluations, how much they can increase over the next two years. So we need to deal with it. They have a lot of media on them, and I'll just something that's taken life.
Right, right. Thanks, sir. All right, we'll move on to public comment. Michael Mouton, are you here today?
Yes, sir.
Yes, if you would, please come on up. Your P O Box 132. Is that Devers, is that a Dayton? Where, where do you live?
I live in Raywood, sir.
Raywood, thank you. Thank you. I didn't have that all there, so I just want to make sure.
Okay.
Okay, and then, yeah. And you're, Adam, if you wish to address the public forums, the ESD two item of the agenda.
No, I'm just, I just want to ask, I just want to make the court aware and then ask for their help as well. And maybe looking into the ESD number two, I know that they recently went out and purchased a truck for over half a million dollars. And my understanding, they didn't take it, they didn't go out and get any bids. He just went and bought the truck for over half a million dollars, right? And I think as a citizen, that our tax money could possibly stay in a better area somewhere, right? Not saying we didn't need the truck, but maybe we could have got a better deal somewhere. I'd also like the court and the commissioners to look into the relationship between the ESD number two and the board members and other people that they employ. I think there's some family members involved. I think a lot of, several of the board members are related. I think people that they're hiring, they are related to. Whether it be nephews, grandsons, aunts, uncles, whatever it may be. Whether it be the cleaning lady, the lawn service guy, the paid people there, or the board members themselves. I think we have some relationship going on there as far as family members goes. And there might be some, to me, might be some nepotism going on.
Right.
Right, and I would just like to make the court aware and ask for some help in looking into that.
Okay.
And then, and then also, last meeting was Saturday. ESD board members admitting to, during, during the meeting, to go and to pay the bills, whether it be electric bills, water bills, whatever it may be, two or three weeks prior to getting approval to pay the bills from the board. They're just going to write the checks, pay the bills, and then getting approval before. And so they're just kind of doing what they want to do without approval of the board to pay the bills and to spend the money. And they admitted that in the meeting, you know. So, and then also, I had brought up several questions, you know, in meetings prior. Never, you know, never been disrespectful, never cussed nobody, never hollered and nothing like that. But they also enlisted to help a police officer. The last meeting, they show up when I walked in the door, and he said, well, you must be Michael Mouton, right? I was the only one there. I don't know how he knew I was coming. Obviously, he had information coming from somewhere else, right? Not only that, he threatened to take me to jail for the meeting started and the whole work, I guess, trying to intimidate me not to give me the speech. You know, I did raise up the question to where several of the board members purchased a truck out on their own, kept it at a board member's house, used ESD money, ESD mechanic to fix the truck, and then sell it back to the ESD as a profit. And put that personal money, they put that money in their personal accounts. So I did bring that up too. Hopefully, that's being investigated by the, by the county. I did bring that concern up as well, but I also want to make y'all aware of what, what was going on there, you know? And then, but other than that, you know, like I said, they, they're hiring people. One of the ESD board members has stated that they pay their friend to pay the bills, to upkeep their websites and things that are not being done. They have a treasurer, in fact, on the board who could pay the bills. Why do they need to pay their friend, right? And that's what the ESD board member stated, well, I've used her for a long time because she's my friend. That was a comment that they made. So I just think that there's better things that could be done in that ESD board. And I just, like I said, just as a, as a taxpayer, I would like to help the court to look into that.
My pleasure. Appreciate you coming in and getting attention on. We can't.
Absolutely, yes, sir. Absolutely. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. All righty, number six, declare conflicts of interest. Does anybody have any conflicts today of interest that they need to declare? They're being done, let's move on to the consent agenda. Are there any add-ons today?
I have some, yes, sir. For the jail, I have two additional payoffs for employees who are not with us. One is for Sharon Irby for unused comp time for $117.52. The other one is Caitlin Van Poel. And the total for her is $6,765.96. Both of these letters have been signed by the sheriff. And then I would like to make a correction on the payoff to Lacy Jones. The total that you all have is $1,431.11.
What is it, Ms. Kim?
It's a correction to the payoff for Lacy Jones.
Okay.
And you have $1,431.11 in your pocket. And that should be $1,501.83. So just about a $70 increase on that one.
Good.
The only other thing I have is that on Monday and Tuesday, we'll have the insurance open enrollment meetings. All of those will be held in the sheriff's department meeting room. On Monday, it will be in the afternoon of 1:03. And on Tuesday, we'll have four meetings, 7:30, 9:30, 1:03. So we'd like everybody to come out and make that. And everybody was sent an email to their personal email account. Should notify you of that soon. And that's all I have. Thank you.
I'll just indicate Caitlin's money. 67, 65, 46.
67, 65, and 76 cents? Yes.
What was the last name?
Dan. Dan Poel.
Follow the additions, make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Yeah, the motion from Bruce, sake for Greg, to approve the consent agenda along with the additions. Is there any further discussion? All favors say aye. Likewise, nays. Yeah, most of them, period. Thank you, Jim. Number eight, one. That's for me. Presentation from Piney Woods CCS Hub, a carbon capture project in Liberty County. Would like to share recent project updates, some timelines for project development. So Piney Woods CCS Hub, y'all here? Come on up here and talk with us. And if you don't mind, kind of get close to Greg right over here. That way, not saying he can't hear well, but the microphone will pick you up a lot better.
That's for me to face you all or the crowd?
Take your pick. Good. Commissioner Wilson's online, so he can see you too. So if you'd like to do the Johnny Carson Show, kind of turn backwards and forwards, take your pick.
Sure. So give us just a second. We have stinking up handouts for many people to get started. 10 minutes sound about right to you?
Sure.
Okay, good to see you again, Judge.
Thank y'all for giving.
So there's a lot of information in the pockets we're going to hand out. I'm not going to walk through every page. Think of that as just a takeaway, so don't forget smart on who we are and the carbon captors in general. Probably a lot of people here have heard about it. So it's a big deal in Texas and across the country right now. So I might repeat a few things for some people and for somebody who's new to that the first time. So good morning, everyone. Thanks for having us. I'm Jesse Brumman, Director of Development at Tanaska. Here with colleagues, listen, I'll send you to Billy Rolles to talk to you about who Tanaska is in general, what carbon capture and sequestration is, we got a ton of it, and specifically our project, Piney Woods CCS Hub. As I said, I jumped around the presentation a little bit, but let me just tell you a little bit about Tanaska and who we are. So we're a fairly diversified energy company, privately held, which I think is important. Our founder, Howard Hogg, still comes into the office every day. We've been around 35 years. People often ask how we are, are we big enough to do these major CCS projects? What I like to say is, well, we're not quite Roxy or Chevron big, but we're big enough to develop 22,000 megawatts of energy projects across the country. I think that's important. But we're also small enough to care about the communities and people that live there. And, you know, not to say that some of the biggest public companies don't do that, but we make a strong access to come in, meet with folks, feel their concerns, et cetera. So that's Tanaska. We've done a ton of work in Texas in general. We have gas plants here. We've done natural gas pipelines. We have an office in Houston and Dallas, and soon we'll have in the city as well. So we know Texas pretty well. All right, so what is carbon capture? Probably a lot of people here have heard about it. But carbon capture in general should be thought of as an accelerator and enabler for certainly the entire industrial industry. So what do I mean by that? Things like hydrogen, ammonia, and other gas plants, concrete, anybody that might be emitter and releases carbon into the atmosphere. Carbon capture and storage is designed to capture that carbon, block it from going into the atmosphere, and get stored back underground. Here's the important part, where it came from to begin with. People often ask, you know, is carbon capture safe? And I think if you think about it in those terms of, well, where did the carbon come from to begin with? It came from the oil and grass that, the oil and gas that's underground. And we put it right back where it came from. Maybe I'll direct your attention to page nine in the deck. This gives a little bit more details on specifically how it works. But, but the way to think about it is, we call them the emitters. Anybody who might emit carbon in the atmosphere, we're able to capture that before it goes in the atmosphere. We're able to convert that into supercritical, basically a liquid pipe fat, through a pipeline, series of networks of pipelines, and capture it underground beneath impermeable tap rock. And that's part of the safety aspect that people ask about a lot is how to keep it underground. And so what we look for is really good geology, but a solid tap rock that you know that that carbon that you put underground will stay where you put it. So there's a lot more details for anybody that wants to look into it later or ask for questions. I think I'm going to jump forward in the presentation, expect to borrow your time, talk about our project specifically, so maybe turn your attention to slide 13. So our project is called Piney Woods CCS Hub. We've been working on this for just about a year and a half now. As I said, I'm going to be a developer, which means I'm out to be talking to people and importantly, reaching arms-length transactions with dozens and dozens of landowners in the project footprint. If we look on slide 15, that gives you a very broad look at the project area. We've done that to be respectful of our landowners, who, you know, not everybody wants to be public facing just yet. But this gives a very general sense of what the project is and the rough size. So as you can see, it's approximately 20,000 acres. We expect that that might shrink or expand by, let's say, 10 to 15% over time as we go through a very rigorous permitting process and approximately a two-mile radius for a mile diameter. So it's a big area, to be sure. There's no way to avoid that. And to sequester that much carbon, it wastes a lot of underground space. But I think the key word to focus on there for everybody in the room is, is underground, right? These projects, 99% of the action and the activity is deep underground, just like oil and gas. So you don't get a lot of surface disturbance. You don't get a lot of tree clearing. You don't get a lot of impact on animals, flora, fauna, et cetera. All the activity is underground, but for a few above-ground injection wells. So across an approximately 20,000 acre site, we really only take up, call it, four to 10 acres of surface space. So the landowners are doubly gunning. You pay for what we call the port space underground, while at the same time, they can do all the things they want to do above ground, farming, typically hunting, recreation, et cetera.
How deep are these wells?
Yeah, so the general depth in this area is going to be somewhere between 2,000 and 8,000 feet. We get into more and more details of that as we go through the petrophysics and the permitting process. But you should think of it as generally between 2 and 8,000. And what's good about that depth is it's generally not the area where you're going to find conflicting oil and gas uses. So we're able to play nice with existing mineral rights and mineral holders. If people still want to do oil and gas extraction, they can do that as well. It also shouldn't affect any sort of the water table or water wells. So you're in a very specific layer of underground that's perfectly suited for carbon capture, but doesn't interfere with other underground uses.
Good.
Yeah. And that's the idea, right? We can be compatible with above-ground and low-ground use of the property. Okay, we're going to look at slide 17. I think the key takeaway here is that CCS is somewhat new, although it has been operating systems for 10, 20 years. It's definitely evolving with better and better technology. It's also evolving in the regulations. So right now, we're governed by EPA, which is a very, very rigorous federal process for permitting that we expect to take two to three years in total. So we don't get to just do this willingly. Yes, we need to talk to the landowners, get agreement, but then we need to spend two to three years with the federal government to get the approval. Right now, there's a process in Texas called Finacy, where the Texas Railroad Commission is trying to take over those regulations and be the permitting body. And so actually, right now, we're in a world where we have to do a dual permitting track, both with the federal government and with the Texas Railroad Commission. So in a sense, everyone's doubly safe. Any questions about how that works? It's definitely an evolving process that we stay on top of. I think I'll end briefly on our community engagement slide, which is right here. I think the main point, certainly backed at Tanaska as a privately held company still run by its founder, is when we do projects, we really care about the communities that we work in. We try to get out in front of any potential issues, concerns of the community, court, judge. We want to be here to be transparent about what we're doing, answer questions, and above all, not have any surprises for you folks that are in charge from your constituent units, right? I don't, I want you to know about it first from me and our team, to be able to ask questions and not be surprised by anybody.
Yeah.
So I think with that, I'll conclude the presentation and open it up if anyone has any questions. We don't have an ask from anybody. We don't need anything. This is just informational for now.
Good deal. I'll remind you of an old saying that a warden once told me years ago. The only surprise everyone will hear about is the circus came to town. So anyway, just in case, remember I said that maybe 10 years from now, I won't be here. But then again, somebody did.
Yeah.
And there might be that question.
Yeah. All right, thanks for everyone's time.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions, Judge.
Got a question, Leon?
Yeah, I've got a few questions about this. On this carbon capture, is it a permanent storage facility? I mean, from now till the end of time?
The analogy I like to use, and I tell this to the landowners, is think you just discovered you have an underground warehouse that's perfectly suited to capture carbon. And the reason it's suited to capture carbon is because it's what we call the two Ps, permeability and porosity of the rock. So there's certain kinds of rocks that are, that are good for wet things, have a lot of oil and gas in them. Other kinds of rock don't have the oil and gas in them, but they have these porous spaces that you can store the carbon in. So your question is really, how long does it last? So eventually, I mean, over a geologic period, the carbon mineralizes back into the rock to become solid rock again. That's over geologic time. In the near term, the way to think about it is the S. In the near term, the way to think about it is the S in CCS is sequestration, and the S of doing a lot of work there. And by that, I mean, we're required to make sure that carbon is sequestered and doesn't move out of the very precise area that we've told the federal government that it will go. So in other words, we get a permit for a very specific location, and we have to continually affirm and verify that the carbon that we've captured is also sequestered in that warehouse. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying.
It moves. We're not doing our job. We also don't get paid, so I don't expect that to happen.
Thank you for that answer. So let me ask you a question. Say like, you got the storage facility, it's located, it's up and operating. What would happen, come along with a big leak? Would it have the potential to affect our groundwater? Would it contaminate it? And what type of immediate climate change within that area could it affect? What would happen with it if it did place?
Yeah, so carbon capture over all of the operating projects in history has demonstrated to be very, very safe. We've seen very, very few major leaks, so I like to set that out as a premise. Now, because there's always a potential for some sort of catastrophic event, a mistake. Yes, yes, there could be. Getting back to one of the things I said in my presentation is, if you think about where the carbon came from to begin with, right, it came from the rocks underground. So in a sense, it's a very natural process to put it back in there. Carbon's an inert gas, so it's not explosive, so you don't have to worry about certain big fires or big explosions. But if you did have a major leak, there is a potential for environmental challenges, right? You know, we breathe a mixture of oxygen and we settle carbon. So you're definitely trying to avoid a huge leak of carbon in any one particular area. You could see some negative effects to, you know, animals that are living in that area or buried underground. We do our best to avoid that scenario. I do like to compare it though, just by way of example, right? We could ask the same question about any concrete facility, natural gas facility, ammonia plant, all of which have much more flammable, dangerous, toxic materials. So comparison, it's really apples to oranges compared to all the operating industrial facilities in the area. The potential for a real catastrophic problem is much, much lower. But it's possible, which you wouldn't ever see with the worst-case scenario of a carbon plant would look towards a magnitude less dangerous and problematic than explosion at, say, a gas plant or a moving factory or any chemical plant, things that already exist in the general region.
So if there was a major leak, it could contaminate the groundwater?
There's potential. Yeah, yeah.
Would it have the abilities also to affect climate change within the area?
That's a really good question. I probably would have to check with my engineering team on what that would look like. Obviously, you'd be releasing carbon back into the environment, carbon which would have gone there anyway, which we didn't capture to begin with. I'd have to do a little more digging to give you a good answer on what might even be a climate change look like if there was an immediate, you know, catastrophic leak. I just don't know, but we can get you that answer.
How, if you did have a major leak, how would it affect the health and well-being of the public? And let's say even the wildlife?
Yeah, so the natural process, the carbon, right, it's going to absorb back into the air. So the answer to that question really would depend really on specifics of how much carbon was leaked in one particular area and whether we were able to contain that, or whether it was, you know, spreading back into the environment. One thing I think that's important to note about this particular area, which you probably know better than I do, it's very, very sparsely populated. There are kind of deer, alligator, and out there a lot, you know, it's mostly used for hunting. I can't remember the exact number of structures, but we're not talking about a highly populated area. Very, very few people out there other than the occasional hunter. Almost no permanent residences. So that's why we picked the area specifically was that, A, it's perfectly suited for the geologic sequestration, so it should be very, very safe to begin with. And B, even if there was a problem, very, very few people to affect.
Thank you.
Got it.
All right. Any more questions from any one? Other than?
Is this, when you go to the landowner, do you get into a lease with a long-term lease? Or is this something that is a permanent improvement that you have to block weeds?
It's like, no, you got exactly right. It's a long-term lease. So we go into it, call it a development or diligence period, that's an option. Once we've confirmed and we've gotten the permit, we know everything's approved and ready to go, that converts to a long-term lease. Generally, the leases are anywhere between ten and twenty years. We all want the project to go as long as possible because the landowner continues to do the hard work, continue to do well, environment continues to do.
Does it have any implication to the value of the property as a taxable? I always kind of want to know that part of it since I am a tax collector.
Yeah.
Just wondering if it does have an enhancement to the value of the property or is it considered a devaluation to the property?
Yeah, so I'll turn it back to you a little bit. I mean, it depends a lot on how the community decides to treat it. Generally, though, what, well, our lease is three that if there ends up being an increase in the property tax to the landowner, that's something that Tanaska has to cover. We obviously have to take that. Nobody, no landowner would take on that risk, so we always take that. Each community treats that a little bit differently into how they eventually tax the property. Do they tax only what's addition, what's above ground? Do they tax on what's below ground? Is it all in? That's something that we actually generally negotiate as we go through the project. At the end of the day, a landowner should be no worse off, and hopefully they're a lot better off.
Sure. And last thing is, are you going to have to build, any new pipelines to transfer that liquid from the site? Or is it going to be a general gathering line, or is it going to be transported separately?
I think the answer is yes and yes. So we expect, depending on which customers we ultimately contract with, the people that do the emissions, for some of those customers, we'll have to create new pipelines to reach that. I think given the, my general view is, given the amount of CCS projects in the general area, there's going to be some sharing of resources as we go through time. That's going to take some coordination between companies like ours, Exxon, Denver, and others. So I think you'll see about, you can just see sharing of resources in some cases and new pipelines and others.
One last question, if you don't mind, please. So if you lease that property for ten or twenty years, and let's say at the end of ten or end of twenty, Honeywood pulls out, the property owner pulls out, what use is it of that property? What can that property be used for? Can you, I wouldn't say you could put a beltman in there, would you?
So let's differentiate first between subsurface and the subsurface. So once you put the carbon into the warehouse and it's full, then your warehouse is full. So it's definitely true to say you can't do carbon sequestration indefinitely. So that use will be filled up. It'll serve its purpose. It will help the environment, and the below ground is done. Now, still circling back to what I said earlier, you can do your water wells, you can do oil and gas, all those uses work. Above ground, you should also be able to do anything that you wanted to do before. So there should be no prohibitions or restrictions. In other words, anything we're doing below ground with the sequestration shouldn't affect the use of above ground. There will be those few well sites which we'll have to cap and monitor. But other than that, the landowners should be able to do whatever they were doing before. Having said that, a lot of that, and again, turning us back to the court or the local decision makers, there could be areas where rules are instituted that will say, no, once there's a carbon project, maybe you can't do a subdivision, or you can't do a high-rise or building or whatever. So a lot of that depends on the decision makers in the community and how they feel about carbon projects and what they want to allow in city. What we've seen to date across various jurisdictions is because carbon is safe and we trust the sequestration part of it, there's no reason that the surface can't be used however the landowner wants to use it. And again, in this area that we're specifically talking about here, I don't know if this is the right term, but like, it's swampy, right? It's wet. It's very wet, a lot of trees, a lot of hunting. People aren't building there. You wouldn't expect a subdivision to be there anyways, right? You would expect it to be a recreational use. But if I'm wrong about that, then there's no reason you shouldn't be able to build houses or anything else.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah, I forgot to talk of the questions. If you don't mind, I'll be quick. While it became, this is the first question. Second question is what you're describing to me is you're putting an injection well in, and it's going to be an ashtray waste site. That's what I'm interpreting. We'll get back. We'll meet after this meeting. I'd like to do some more questions. That'd be great. Okay, welcome then.
Good deal. All right. Any further questions this morning? I would like to consider this to be take no action item. So if I could get motion second to do so?
Take a motion and take no action.
Okay. Motion from Bruce. Say, Leon, take no action. I'll favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you so much. Appreciate you coming.
Thanks, Josh.
And get ready. You got some questions coming. I guarantee you, chief back there, it's going to be good. Yeah. All right. All right, number eight point two from Mr. Poston. Consider and approve the T I B C grant. I guess, what's the acronym there, Matthew?
Texas Indigenous Defense.
What is it?
Commission Grant. This is the Indigenous Defense Grant. Commissioner Wilson, we apply to it every year. It helps offset a lot of the costs that we have in providing counsel to the folks in Florida. So I would ask it to be approved.
Make the motion we approve.
Second.
Motion Leon, second for Bruce to approve. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Nat, would you do me a good favor? Reach over there and turn that air conditioner up. Well, not off, we're just some, somewhere between fifty-five and seventy-two or seventy-five.
We're sitting on seventy right now, dude.
Let's bump it to seventy-five because I know I'm cold, and I don't know if I'm cold. Dee Dee's freezing.
Kind of glad I wore my long sleeve.
Thank you, buddy. Number three, eight-three, from Mr. Brown. Consider and approve reimbursement for counterfeit twenty-dollar bills received from Cleveland Annex. Imagine that. Okay.
This is the real twenty dollars if I had to add one. The one we got wasn't real. I guess the bank bought it. We had pens and, you know, everything else, but I had to get it through. So of course, when the bank gets it, they don't give it back to you, and they take it off deposit. So we've got to make it back good, so we asked the court to reimburse us that twenty dollars.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, saving from Greg to approve. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number four from Ms. McMillan, and I believe you've asked to take no action at this time, Penny?
Yes, sir, Judge. Please. We are still waiting for trial and care for their updated agreements, contract, MOU, whatever they're going to send us. We haven't gotten it yet.
Just hadn't got it yet.
Yeah, haven't gotten it yet.
I know you're going to.
We're purely on here.
I'm guaranteeing, I know you're going to lean on them, so I'm not going to worry. All right. All right.
Do you want to just table this, bring it back?
Let's table this, just in case it shows back up.
Make a motion to table it.
A motion from Bruce to table, saving from Greg. Further discussion. There being none, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number five from Commissioner Wilson, consider and approve your inter-local agreement between Liberty County and Old River Transit District. And of course, with all the other, the words that we all add to it, it's just, you're going to be your typical renewal. Is that correct, Leon?
I see it. It's just typical yearly renewal. Old River Transit District is an asset, precinct four. And we enjoy assisting them as well as they enjoy assisting us.
Got a motion, little Greg.
Second.
Second for Bruce. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. Motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Commissioner, number eight-six, Commissioner Korbowski. Consider and approve inter-local agreement between Liberty County and the City of Dazetta for mowing ditches and the sewer plant and to mutually help provide better service to the public and reduce expense by avoiding cost duplication of equipment and other resources. Again, this is an inter-local agreement to work together. Just a little bit different wording. You're going to be doing some mowing around the sewer plant as well.
Correct. They're going to be paying us two hundred dollars a month throughout the entire year for the mowing period during the summer that we do to offset fuel costs.
Sure you got the money in there in that cost for fuel? Man, I keep hearing we're going to have six-dollar gas here pretty soon. But I threw it out there, yeah.
Motion to approve.
Got motion, Leon. Second, second Greg. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number seven from Ms. Chambers. Consider and approve the expenditure of Liberty County Court Records Management funds for the following records management purchases for 2024. Paper, not to exceed seventy-five hundred. Laser ink, not to exceed fifteen thousand. File folders, not to exceed ten thousand. Marriage papers, Lord knows we need that, not to exceed twenty-two thousand dollars, and flashcards. And Lee, I'm going to ask you to do one thing. Okay, I've got an agey opinion. I would, your attorney?
Yep.
Okay. Maggie's attorney, Abby's attorney. Would y'all please read over this before we, I'm going to ask that we table this and bring it back?
If you table it, the office will shut down. We are out of supplies.
You are out of supplies.
Twenty-five thousand in here.
No, that's for other things. If we spend this stock on that, we will run out of that money before the year's out. So this is what we've been doing every year. This has never been an issue. And I understand what you're raising. It was raised to me before the meeting. Every record we produce is a permanent record. It is kept permanently. All those court cases, all those deed records, those are permanent records. And they require paper to produce, ink to produce, file folders to put them in, while we keep them under a retention period that's outlined by the library. That's another statute that dictates what we do and how we do it. Those seals and stamps, that's what we put on every record to prove that it is a, you know, a record that we keep. All of this, every bit of it is what we spend every year, in the year and year out, on records management. And we've always paid for it through this fund. I guess I'm a little confused as to why it's coming up. But I figured the best way to handle it is for you to just say, okay, business as usual, and then we'll go forward. But right now, all of our orders are being held up, and we don't have any supply. And we will shut down because without paper, we can't do anything. We can't build a court case. I can't print your minutes. I can't answer a public information request. We can't accept a deed record. We can't function. Answer a public information request, we can't accept a deed record, we can't function. Everything will quit, so.
Yeah, I need you to do me a favor, I don't have that court, that uh, that Attorney General. Opinion anywhere, just read me the, just the summary of the Attorney General's opinion.
Okay, uh, the summary is neither the Commissioners' Court nor the county clerk. Controls the use of the records management. And preservation fees collected under section one-one-eight-point-zero-two-one-six of the Local Government Code. As a practical matter, both must agree on the use of the funds. Funds collected under section one-one-eight-point-zero-two-one-six. May be used to pay for the cost of initially recording documents by microfilm. But only if the Commissioners' Court determines. That this process is part of a specific records preservation. And automation project within section one-one-eight-point-zero-two-one-six of the Local Government Code. Furthermore, the records management and preservation fee must be spent. For specific records preservation. And automation projects. Subject to the Commissioners' Court's advanced approval. It may not be diverted from its statutorily assigned purposes. To pay other expenses of the clerk's office.
Okay, what, what was the date of that opinion, Jake?
Uh, let's see, that was from uh, November seventeenth nineteen ninety-eight.
Aye.
Is there an opinion number, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wilson, is there an opinion number on there, if I can pull it up?
Uh, opinion number D M four-nine-two.
Okay, so Matthew?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm interpreting that summary. That indicates that the purpose of this agenda item is for record management. Am I clear?
That's correct.
And in order. For Ms. Chambers to be able to utilize. These funds through uh, Record Management Fund. Based on what summary I've read, or was Jay read for me? That is wanting to be the purpose of. Of the funds to be utilized, do you see where there is a? Problem with this? Is uh, based on, based on what the summary indicates, is that? I guess as long as it's with the. Permission of the Commissioners' Court, it can be done, is that correct?
Well, uh, you're able to just uh, told me that there, there are crackle reasons other than legal issues with this. Uh, there might be diminishing amounts of money to cover what she applies, I don't know.
In the, in the consent agenda, you have my monthly report, it includes end of the year numbers. We put five-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars approximately into that fund last year alone. Um, there's, I think they're funded in there. There should not be a problem, we have been paying for this stuff through that fund on a regular basis. Uh, I don't anticipate, the only other thing that comes out of that fund besides the stuff that's on this piece of paper. Or on this agenda item is uh, uh, the salaries. And um. You know. Those might need to be adjusted, we did not get to discuss that for this budget session, but um. Everything that's on there, uh. Half of certain salaries, and then our uh, our supplies, that's all that's paid out of that fund, but we put a uh, great deal of money in that fund every year. And I anticipate that being at least that much this on, this upcoming year, in fact, I'm expecting growth, so. Um, somewhere between five-hundred-and-fifty and six-hundred thousand is my guess of how much money we will put into this singular fund alone. This fund has nothing to do with the restoration project, that's a completely different fund, by the way. It also gets over five-hundred thousand dollars.
There's a lot of money in there. And as long as the county likes it, it needs to be spent. My issue is. With that last sentence, and then Attorney General. Can't be. My, my, my concern is that last sentence, Attorney General opinion, that's my main concern with this. It's gotta be for specific records management and preservation projects. And it can be used for other functions of the county clerk's office. It can, in my opinion. It can be used for elections, I mean, this could drive.
No, it isn't used for elections, though.
Yeah, for mail-in ballots.
That is software that we purchased in the Commissioners' Court approved a few months ago. And the reason it's on there is because we have to collect and keep. All of the records of the people that, that request and submit for written app for six years, so. That's a law that was passed, we have to keep those records for an extended period of time. Um. I don't think that, uh, you know, the elections budget is not really set up for records preservation. Uh, it is under my department, and um. You guys approved us doing that, um, if you want to pay for that a different way, I'm open to that, but. That, the purpose of that is because we do have to keep the images, we have to keep the images of the occupation. And the actual envelope that comes in for the mail-in ballots for six years, that's the law. So that is a records keeping function, that's why we bought the software.
Hey, Matthew?
Yes, sir.
All right, I need, I need your suggestions and your opinion. And thoughts, what needs to be done here, do we need to? Possibly go out and seek an additional updated Attorney General's opinion? Are you happy with what is present? And what would your recommendations of the court be on this matter?
Well, practically speaking, I think the, the first and foremost, we have to make sure that Lee's office is functioning, so she needs paper. Is there any source of revenue that uh, it's undisputed, can you use purchase paper? Uh, I suggest we start making those first from those sources immediately. We can resolve this absolutely by going through an A G process. Uh, I would be concerned, and I'm happy to do it, I'll, I'll write. But I, I wanna make sure that uh, while we're doing that, uh, Lee's office. I'm not gonna let Lee's office turn out paper, I'm not gonna let Lee's office turn out. Copy. I'm not, I'm not gonna let her run out of envelope, we got stuff in the budget to cover it, I'm not gonna let. Shut down the government, personally, I just need to make sure these funds are spent strictly according to the law. And I, and there's a lot of money in there, it should be spent on certain things, and. And Lee, you know, she can work the all, and she can work with management projects, and so I've got a million dollars in it, you know?
Dwayne, what you're suggesting is, is. On your suggestion is being that. We find. An, an additional way to pay for what's needed?
That's not the issue, which can be settled.
Well, that, well, brother, listen to me. Uh, that kind of close office got to operate. And when it comes to record management. We're mandated by law to do it, so. We, either we pass this this morning and allow this take place, based on what the summary Jay just read. Or we, under your suggestion, and Matthews. We found an additional way to pay for this. So what, what would be your suggestion? Do you want to lose some money from? And, and, and pay for this until we get Attorney General's opinion?
You've got money to pay for, but I just think we just need to streamline what this money's been spent on. It doesn't need to be spent on LISOL wipes.
If you look at that, if you look at that request, that Office Chief request. The O one-O, the general fund money, the office expense money pays for LISOL wipes, it pays for post-it notes, it pays for pens. It pays for everything else we do, except for paper and file folders and ink, which we use to produce records. And that's the major distinction, and we are very careful about applying money. We have so many funds that we have to operate out of, we're very careful about how we apply that money. We don't buy office products. Through that, the Records Management Fund, the only thing we buy through that is software. Hardware, paper, and, and folders, and, and the ink that. Which costs a fortune, by the way, to run the printers, um. And we do so many, I think I have a report here from last year that we did over sixty-one, sixty-two thousand. Documents through Eagle for deed records alone. I mean, it's a tremendous volume of documents and paperwork that we do. And the office expense line is not sufficient to cover that, and it's not intended to cover that. If Dwayne's worried and wants to revisit the uh, election software, we can do that, that's going to renew. Um, I think at some point, the Kias thing got missed out into November, that is a big paperwork, you wanna look at that again, we can look at that. I'm still waiting to look at the notice stuff, that's causing me problems at the moment. But what is on here, what I'm asking you to do is approve these little purchases upfront, because. Uh, we don't have huge amounts of storage space, so we have to purchase these in little chunks. Uh, I went through and started calculating all the times we bought paper last year. We do it about twice a month, and each one's about two-hundred, three-hundred dollars a purchase. If you want to run these through every time we do one. Y'all are gonna be busy, here's all the times we bought ink, here's all the times we bought paper, here's all the times we bought file folders, we do it all. All the, you know, I mean, it's a constant thing, you know, we start running out, we buy some more, we start running out, we buy some more. We can't buy a pallet full of the stuff because we have no place to put it. We have to buy it as we need it, and um. You know, we know what goes through which pocket, and we try to be very careful about making sure everything goes through the opposite pocket. But, you know, the purchasing department reviews it, Dwight's department reviews it, I don't think it's an issue, and I don't think anyone on Commissioners' Court. Wants to keep us from doing our job, so. You know, if you're questioning certain software packages, we can come back to that, but. Our day-to-day supplies, we need it. We have to have our record software, we have to have our, you know, computers and whatnot, we got a new position, we gotta, you know, put together. I mean, this is how we pay for that stuff, um, that's why we collect ten dollars on every transaction is to pay for this stuff. I think I calculated that for every dollar we spend, we collect about fourteen. So um, part of that fourteen is the money that helps to pay for the. You know, the dollar we're collecting for the, you know, the effort we're putting in to collect that dollar, so there's a lot to it, it's very complicated. So, uh, we gotta have the money there to pay for it.
The, the reason you uh, brought this today is as a plan, is that correct?
Uh, uh, pre-approval.
Pre-approval, yeah, so why do you, maybe, can you explain why a person has to see through approval of a plan? Just so that we can understand what's being asked today.
We've never really done it before, because the approval is, is. I hate to say it applied, but it is, I mean, you know, you're, you're extending records management funds to do records management. Um, however, beginning October second of this month. Our purchase orders have been put on hold because we were using. Some of the funds for this to buy these paper and file folders particularly, I think they're on this one, I don't remember, laser ink is, is not. Um, and so to address the issue of, do you have approval for this, I put this on the agenda?
So, uh, is there, and let me, let me, what I'm driving at on that too, Lee, is that things. What the court is, is looking at today is, in order for you to spend any money out of the account, courts are asking for a plan, so there's not really, right? And I'll say, well, hey, this Ferrari was really necessary.
The only thing that requires a written plan is the archival money, not this one in particular. Um, the plan, i- if you call it that, is for us to continue to function. And purchase supplies through that, that, that uh, fund that we've been purchasing the supplies through. This just gives the Legislature and upfront way of saying, okay, they're gonna have to buy paper, they're gonna have to buy. Ink, they're gonna have to buy computers, and they're gonna have to buy software, this is what they paid for. Last year, this allows them to do it again this year, anything be, uh, above and beyond this would have to come back to Commissioners' Court for approval.
Yeah, yeah, so this is your plan, though, is what, is what you're saying?
It's, it's a renewal of what we did last year. You know, basically, everything that's been approved that we're doing that's functioning for the office right now.
And the, and the purpose of bringing this for the court is to comply with the statutory requirement to. Make a finding that these are, in fact, records management preservation items under this, but. Uh, so part of the issue here is whether or not, if I can just boil it down to the core, is there some disagreement about. What records management preservation actually, right? The definition says it is for preserving and managing documents after they have been filed.
Right.
After they have been created, uh, and then it has been recorded. So that's where the disconnect and argument is, is over how much. Uh, uh, of these documents, I mean, are, uh. And that's, or how much of these expenses are necessary behind them being recorded, and how much are passed.
Everyday filing is not considered record management.
So, everything that a clerk does is not records management.
Well, no, answering the phone is not records management. But this is the definition of records management in the statute. Um, records management means the application of management techniques to the creation, use, maintenance, retention. Preservation and disposal of records for the purposes of reducing the cost. And improving the efficiency of record keeping, the term includes the development of records control schedules. The management of filing and information retrieval systems, the protection of essential and permanent records. The economical and space-effective storage of inactive records. Control over the creation and distribution of forms, reports, and correspondence. And the management of micrographics and electronic and other record systems. That's straight out of Texas law.
A lot of this, but they make reference to microfiction and all that stuff, uh, but we're. Uh, yeah, I, I don't see a, a major difference between the uh, I T systems of the employers and micro.
Now, and really, the date of that tells you everything, because nineteen ninety-eight, a lot of that is microfilm. Which is another purchase order that's being held out, because, but that's another story. Um, we have to keep that film preserved, it has to go into a special place, and.
So, I, I can tell you at this time, I, I don't think there's consensus in the county. That all of these purchases meet the definition uh, that we're talking about. What Commissioners' Court, if I, let's have a second, what Commissioners' Court needs to do, what, what their uh, responsibility is to make a finding. That uh, these purchases would be the most uh, purposes. And so, if Commissioners' Court is not satisfied and cannot make a, a decision on that right now. Then we would be in a position where Lee wouldn't have, so I, I, I think this is a genuine, uh, legitimate. Uh, uncertainty that we need to discuss, and it needs to be sorted out with the A Gs, but I also think. We can't let uh, Lee's office quit functioning, so again, I would just say. If, if there are items here, then we can all agree, then I, I would.
Okay.
Urge everyone to do so.
Nothing on here hasn't come before Commissioners before, I mean, this has all been approved before, these are renewals. This isn't new stuff.
Well, yeah, I understand, I, I understand that, but with the past behavior too, we could have made mistakes in the past. We don't want to use that as a basis for continuing our mistakes. So, uh, all, all that's again to say, so if there are items that everybody categorically agree on, then let's please do so.
Is this gonna be a regular thing now, anytime we renew software that we have to come in and revisit whether we need it or not?
I, I hope not.
Okay, uh, really, all I was trying to do was say, here's what we spent last year. We're gonna spend it again this year, let's encumber those funds, and say they're spent for those purposes. And uh, anything above and beyond that's unusual, beyond that, of course, it will come here, and we will talk about it. Um, you know, are we gonna do this project for that project? Uh, our, our projects and the things that the legislature's mandating that we do changes regularly. Um, we have new stuff now, you know, that they're requiring us to do this and that. That's going to require extra effort on our part, we haven't even figured out how to do it yet. Those things will be brought to the court as needed, but this is, this is. Those things will be brought to the court as needed, but this is, this is day in, day out. This is how we do our business. Um, so I, I don't really know any other way to do this, other than to start coming here with every single purchase going, is this okay? Can I, you know, and we've never had to do that before. I think it was implied that we need it for our work. You know, it's records management as defined in the statute and, uh, you know, so we got it and it's always been approved in the past. So.
I'm taking out of this that our, our biggest concern is where this money's coming from. Whether record management actually covers everything that is on this list. So, let's come up with an agreement and go through these items. And let someone tell me whether record management can pay for this or not, and the rest of it needs to be out of, uh, another fund somewhere.
Well, contingency funds are about the only spot we have that we can, contingency funds is about the only thing we have left we can dig off into, the way I look at it. And I'm not sure what they're sitting at right now, although I know we have spent recently about thirty thousand. Um, which was like to me an unfounded mandate that just popped up. And here we are on the tenth day of October and the budget just started. And we usually shot a weight on this contingency type expenditures until July. We really, we would really get down to the last final, uh, cutting the fly's head off and saying, okay, we're done. So, you know, my, I understand Dwayne's point. He wants to make sure that funds are expended according to law. I understand Lee's point as an attorney, your point as attorney and Catherine's attorney. You know, do we need to go back and get an A G opinion and, and find out?
I mean, it sounds like to me, and this is a concern I have too, I, I, I'm concerned that the, uh, mail-in ballot software does not comply with this. The other stuff I'm much less concerned with such as lasering, uh, or file folders.
Yeah.
If we approve this, pay for it, you get Attorney General's opinion and something is not important, then we could, uh, reverse those, those contingency funds.
Or can we just exclude the mail-in ballot software on here?
That's what I'm hoping, yeah.
It's, it's paid for for a year. I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna last. I would be careful because we have a very big election coming up. If you're not gonna pay for it this way, let's find another way for, to pay for it. But the reason we didn't is because of the six-year retention period. Um, that is a, a statutory requirement that the software has to meet and, um, you know, we don't have any other software to do that with. So, uh, if we don't have this software, somehow we've got to figure out how to keep those records and search and find and pull those records like that uh, for a six-year period. Yeah, mainly I think what they're doing is they're comparing signatures. Uh, there seems to be a lot of concern about, uh, fraud with regard to those documents, but, um, yes, it is a requirement that we keep those records for six years.
Dwayne, would you be happy if so, approving this and excluding the ballot software? At this point in time, until we got some kind of, uh, opinions?
Oh. Like ballot software, marriage paper.
No, wait, what's the marriage paper?
I think what, what I'm thinking on that, you know, is that it's impossible to do record, uh, a marriage license that, uh, hasn't already been printed. So because of the timing requirement under the records man- management definition, uh, you couldn't pay for marriage papers on same logical.
No, the way it works is they come in, they fill out an application. The application is created and we have to forward that to the state. We create the actual license itself. Um, it has to be filled out by the officiant. It's returned back to the office. We complete the licensing and the recording process. It's handed to the system, the copy also sent to the state and the originals returned back, the same way we do deed records, as a matter of fact. Um, we do have to certify and create and reproduce marriage license and, and create certificates, certifying that we did issue those marriage licenses. And we do keep paper copies. They're in the big vault right as we speak.
So, yeah, I, I'm with you. That, that, that'll track, but the definition is.
The paper is official paper. It's printed.
No, I, I dare.
Very expensive.
Definition is for the records management preservation services performed after the filing.
This is, this is the definition of records management and it says creation, use, maintenance, retention, preservation and everything. I don't think in nineteen ninety-eight it's gonna track them all.
Well, one eighteen oh two one six says the fee.
Yeah, that's the fee.
Is for the certain.
This is the government code definition of for records management.
That's great, but if it's not dealing with the fee.
It does have a fee. There's a fee to get a marriage license and it breaks up into sections as well.
Fee for records management preservation.
Mm-hmm. This is like what you're doing with spicings.
Please, if I'm listening, the fund, tell me now, but that's, that's it, right? The fee for records management preservation under section.
That is one of the funds we collect, yes.
But I don't tell me no regular, no, no, we're doing the agenda.
I'd find a way to fund her, uh, paper immediately, everything, uh, that she needs operated immediately and then let's, let's write an opinion on the ballot software and any others. But if she needs paper, I, one way or another, it's gonna be paid for.
I don't, I don't have anything renewing right now, um, except for, uh, uh, as software wise. Uh, except I need to pay for the micro field, but everything else is, uh, is already been approved and, uh, paid and, you know, through sometime this upcoming twenty twenty-four, these things will come back up for renewal. Um, generally if the contracts renew, I bring them to Commissioners' Court and then what? So. You know, because usually there's some change to the contract or whatnot and they come before you anyway, those contracts, the software renewals.
Contracting cost.
What I was trying to show you though was that the amount of money that we spend, you know, specifically for the preservation and retention of records, creation of records, the whole bit. And that, uh, it's a significant amount of money and it, uh, has always been paid out of records management. And, um, I think that what you'll find is when you do the Attorney General opinion is that's what's done in two hundred fifty-three hundred counties across the state.
By now, you're not gonna shut down tomorrow.
Yeah, probably by Friday. We've got fifteen rooms of paper left. So.
So if you, if you submitted a, a, uh, P O or we got a P O for paper, Dwayne, can, can you pay for that paper?
Yes, there's a place to pay for it, correctly.
The, the requisition is in the system. It just has it been approved. It's being, um, thrown up home at the moment at the request of the Auditor's Office. We could even have a lot of separate.
Okay, let me, let me ask you this, Matthew.
Yes.
Is there, can we, can we table this for the time being and let you sit down to do an atomization of what you feel like you and Dwayne can be paid for out of records management funds and what other fa- uh, funds need to be brought up um, to pay for it a different way. Can you, can you itemize this for us? And then bring this to us next court and let us, uh, make a vote on it.
Yes, sir. That's what. They said. No, but you, you heard the Auditor's Office, correct? He said, he said, we gotta think several times now that you will find ways to pay for paper and the simple. Yeah, I read that.
That's right. I never thought the Attorney Office would say that one.
Want to make sure we spent it correctly.
That's right. That's right.
Okay. Really doesn't make a difference how much money was spent prior if there is a issue.
Matthew, your recommendation is table this for the time being, bring it back up next Commissioners' Court.
Yes, yes.
I make the motion we table. To be brought back up.
Can you amend that also Leon to include, uh, Dwayne's authorization just to, for expenditures to, uh, carry on the business of the, uh, Office of County Clerks?
Correct. I'll make the motion we table pending the atomization of items that need to be cut out of records management to be bought with additional funds uh, and items that can be purchased through records management, uh, through record management.
Second. Everybody good? Lee?
Is that satisfactory, Matthew?
Yes, sir. It is to me.
Yeah. I got a motion Leon. Oh, Lord, how to read this one back. I'm gonna have to figure it out, but anyway. I have a second.
Second.
Great. Thank you. Second, Greg. And what we're gonna do is find out what it can be spent on legally. What, uh, what Dwayne's Office and the Auditor's Office can spend the money on legally. In the meantime, Dwayne will help you uh, achieve the funds that you need to continue the operation of your office.
Correct.
And get past this point of rescue, so to speak.
I've got motion to table pending the atomization of records to be paid out of records management, uh, but to allow the auditor to find a way to pay for current requisitions for supplies.
Lee.
What's it?
Lee.
Uh-huh.
We're gonna, we're gonna get to the bottom of this and that's through, through the help and the knowledge of Matthew and Dwayne. So, uh, let them get this taken care of. You make your, you make your comments or your suggestions to them and then let them bring this back to court, okay?
Okay.
All right. Motion Leon saying, Greg, is any further discussion? All three say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. And like. Okay. Oh, that was a long one.
And I do believe I can find room in this court out the story, pallet of paper.
My office, we're, we're, we're packed in like a sardines.
I think you could save a lot of money just by finding.
Well, I'm right now. Thank you. Okay, moving along, number eight point eight, uh, for me, the, uh, consider and prove the annual donation of four thousand dollars to the Harden Senior Citizen Center program, an organization that provides meals and activities to the senior citizens in Harden and the surrounding community.
Thank you, motion we approve.
Aye.
Motion Leon, second from David. Further discussion? All three say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Number nine from Mr. Dennis over at I T. Consider and prove phone system for five oh one Palmer Street. You convert over to S I P trunks. Now, uh, Nick's not here today. But what is?
Judge, he texted me and said that it is a new way to save, uh, county on the current monthly bill. I support that location.
Save money for the county. Current bill for that location. Yes. S I P trunks. That's not like.
Google. The term trunk in S I P trunking refers to virtual phone lines that you can use to make phone calls over the internet to anyone with a phone.
Yes. Good idea. Okay. What's court's pleasure?
Thank you, motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce.
Aye.
Saying Leon, further discussion? There being none, call for a vote. All three say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, number eight, ten from Mr. Dennis. Uh, Billy, are you with us?
Yes, sir.
Good, okay. Uh, Chief Knox is online with us and this is, uh, consider and approve Liberty County Sheriff's Office additional phones and phone system licenses to support the additional employees housed in the new Liberty County Sheriff's Office building. How far along we on that right now, Billy? We're getting pretty close to having. Getting ready.
I'm actually sitting out here now at the tower site. Uh, they're hoping to have the concrete done uh, by Friday. They're trying to get ahead of the rain. That's supposed to be maybe today and, and tomorrow. Uh, so it's moving along. The, the, the phone system which Nick has on here, so last week, uh, we were able to get all of our phone lines finally here at the Sheriff's Office turned on. However, the licenses that are at the, the Dayton Annex that Civil used and the ones up in Cleveland, those licenses have to stay at those particular, uh, offices. And the license is coming, uh, a ten-pack, so with everybody moving to the new office over here, uh, we have to get the phone lines obviously turned on here. So it's a cost that wasn't thought of, I guess, initially. And to get the phones added here, that's what, unfortunately, what the cost is.
What is the cost, Billy?
It's roughly twenty-two thousand dollars.
Okay, Dwayne?
They have some extra money and furniture and fixture budget on those vehicles.
You're kidding. Say, did it spend all of it?
Sure.
Well, wait, so we still, yeah, we still have about six offices that we haven't, uh, finished with the furniture yet. I think, Dwayne, is that right? We have about eleven thousand left in there?
Yeah, let me look at it. I only will find some later.
Yeah, we, because we've got about six offices still that we're trying to find furniture.
All right, well, you might not have place to sit, but at least you have telephone. How about that? Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Aye. Motion from Bruce, saying Greg to approve further discussion. All three say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries.
Thank you guys. Thank you.
Number eleven from Mr. C. Consider and approve recommendation to award bid number twenty-three dash nineteen for Culverts. So here we go.
Well, I said, we have three bidders, Ford Line, which is somebody we used several years ago, uh, Culverts who are currently using and Wilson Culverts.
Who, who hurled the last one?
Wilson. Is that familiar? Okay, so, uh, it kind of splits if we do the unit pricing, uh, Culverts on the eighteen inch, which we buy probably the most of, uh, Culverts and Ford Line were the same price, thirteen twenty-five, but anything smaller than the eighteen inch, uh, Culverts was a lower bidder. Anything above eighteen inch, uh, Ford Line was a better. So, I would recommend that y'all order to both of them. The most good price for each one. The one that they share, the eighteen inch, I think you could buy for me the one that's the same price.
All right, any discussion? What's the court's pleasure?
I make the motion we approve based on the advice of Harold. The use of both, uh, companies for the purchase of Culverts.
Yeah, motion Leon, Greg, is that second? Yeah. Take it from Greg. All, any further discussion?
Yeah, what was saying that second? Culvert, I mean, what was that?
Order.
Porter.
S O R E I L I N E.
All three say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twelve, I would ask that we move this into executive. Also, I'm gonna bump it on down to number twenty and ask that we move this in the executive session and number twenty-two as well.
Twenty and twenty-two?
Twenty, twenty-two and twelve. The executive session, but let's, we'll move through the other items first, Leon, and then we'll come. And then we'll come back to these executive session numbers and then uh. Request to move an executive session, take a vote. If it passes, we will move an executive session at that time, have our discussion. So number twelve, we're gonna skip for the moment. Number thirteen. Uh Mr. C, don't sit down yet. Maggie might win Saturday, okay? Uh considering a free solicitation of proposals for the design and installation of a sprinkler system for supply building. To be paid from all the funds. That's gonna be on the new supply building over by Hartel building, correct?
Down for it last time, we had a quote from the the current builder, but to. For the grant work and make sure that art for funds paid for, we need to offer this.
Okay, have we found anybody to bid?
Uh, yeah, I think we got a few uh options. And we'll do instead of doing this, we're gonna do with rest of the proposals. But they're probably a bit negotiating on for this. Thank you, motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, saving David to approve. All three say aye. Likewise, no. That motion carries. Number fourteen, Mr. C. Consider and approve extension of a contract at same terms, conditions with synergy petroleum for one year.
Okay, so we had, this was uh John Hebert that became. Got something else and and then last year they turned into synergy. They were a little bitter and the way we do fuel. Is they have several different terminals that they purchased that runs from depend on the day and by the time of the day that they go. Uh they get the best price for themselves. They play the same game we're playing. And when uh when they deliver on that date and that time, whatever terminal they went to and they send the invoice. They show their rat price that they picked it up. And so we have them bid a market price. And it's fifteen cents. Uh the current contract we have and they will maintain the same terms, conditions, price if we extend it for one more year.
Motion approved.
Motion Leon, second from David. Any further discussion? There being none, call for a vote. All three say aye. Likewise, names. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number fifteen, Mr. C. Considering accept a fifteen thousand, two hundred and seventy two dollar and sixty seven cents from Renee Bates Auctions. And acknowledgement list of items sold. So we had an auction.
Yeah.
We actually got some money out of it.
Yeah, your pretty dog's in the uh. There should be in the package of what actually sold. Uh there were some items that didn't. And this is basically just to accept the check, we wanted positive second check and. Uh just put it in the record, here's the items that we sold at auction. Thank you, motion to approve.
Motion Bruce, second Leon. Further discussion? All three say aye. Likewise, that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh number sixteen. Mr. C, now we're just wearing you out today, buddy. Okay, considered and declare and salvage the list of items not sold on the online auction.
Okay, there was uh most of the computers, usually people would bid like ten dollars, but at least they'd come get them and take them. And we wouldn't have to worry about them. Uh I don't think anybody purchased any of the old computers, laptops or monitors. Uh we still have some of the lots of the law books sold. We still have some that haven't, that we had no bid on. At a thermal fogger that nobody bid on and they sure something from the truth enough for the D A. Uh oh four Bonnet Grand Prix, nobody bid on. So if y'all declare them a salvage, then we will uh figure out which way to how to get rid of them.
Yeah, the motion Leon, second from Bruce. To approve further discussion? All three say aye. Likewise, names. Yeah, number seventeen, Mr. C. Considering approve contract with global assets for the removal and recycling of computer equipment.
In two thousand nineteen uh at a storage facility down here past the county clerk's office. Which your coral basket kind of went wild. We started piling everything up, so we contracted with global assets. Uh they're on by board, Texas D I R, couple other uh co-ops. What they'll do is they'll come pick it up, they'll pick it up. Put it on pallets, wrap it up in plastic. I think they did three pallets there last time. We don't have that much now, but they will come get it. They take it to Carrollton is where their facility is. And they recycle it, whatever they do with it. Uh the D O D, there's some, I guess, that's Department of Defense compliant of getting rid of. Electronics. They followed that and then they sent us a certificate back saying that we can follow it, that we comply with the D O D. Didn't last time we had taken all the hard grabs out or? Yeah, I think it's already done. Yeah, I want to make sure. I don't think you have to with them because they're because of the way their contract is. Uh they'll also, some of it, if it's salvageable and they can sell it, they will send us a check. I think they did last time, not very much, but they did send us a check. And they have a big contract with a little bit of college and. A bunch, several other entities in Houston, so they come down here, he says about a couple of times a month. But I want to use them again. Said that costs anything, this can be ongoing for the next year, if anything we have, and we'll just come pick it up.
Sure.
It's an easy way to get rid of it. Make a motion to approve.
Motion Bruce, saving David to approve further discussion. All three say aye. Likewise, names. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, here are one more. Consider approving purchase of two Dodge Chargers from Cowboy Dodge for eighty two thousand. Two hundred ninety six dollars forty cents off the byboard contract number six oh one dash nineteen for the Sheriff's Department.
Yeah, Sheriff, just request I put this on here to purchase it from their capital.
Motion David, second from Greg to approve further discussion. All three say aye. Likewise, names. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Always glad to help, Sheriff. Uh so Mr. Hugge Mueller, come on up, she would. Consider and approve agreement between Liberty County and the following volunteer fire departments. We've got Cypress Lakes, North Liberty County, Tarkin, Plum Grove, Devers, Dayton, Woodbaker. Moss Bluff, Keneffick Highway three twenty one and E S D three, E S D seven. And South Liberty County Hazardous Material and Emergency Response Team. And the Liberty County Firefighters Association for Fire Protection Services. Now I have the contracts in my office that they have not signed them until we receive approval.
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah. Uh we still have three contracts out uh which is the E S D two. Uh City of Liberty and City of Cleveland. So we have three of them still out. Those guys have already been signed uh by myself and them and waiting for permission for approval. Make a motion to approve. They had it approved? No, they're right. I haven't uh received them back yet. Three of them.
Well, Bill, we go ahead and uh. We go ahead and uh make the motion to approve on the ones that have turned their contracts in and then. Uh uh hold off on the votes on these, on the other three.
The others three, we will put on commission for once they get the contracts.
Okay, and that the three you just mentioned are excluding who?
Uh E S D two, which is Nolaza, City of Liberty and the City of Cleveland.
Okay. I got a motion for Bruce already. Could you make a second, please?
Yeah, I'll make a second.
Thank you. Got a second from Leon.
Correct, correct me now, Jay.
Yeah.
Making a motion on the ones that the contracts have been turned in. And the other three will be uh be decided at a later date.
Yes, sir.
The three is not on the list.
Yeah, we got those.
Yeah, okay.
All three say aye. Likewise, names. Ninety five. And I will drain that ink pen here shortly.
No problem, David.
Okay, where's number twenty? We moved into executive session. Move on to twenty one uh from Mr. Poston. Consider and approve resolution to adopt section seven seven five point zero four two two. Texas Local Government Code authorizing Liberty County Commissioners Court to remove. Or cause any appointed commissioner. On emergency services district two and possible subsequent hearings is proven to have committed a prohibited act.
So uh as part of y'all's authority over E S Ds, y'all have the uh. Uh ability to remove commissioners on. And then a prohibited act. What I mean by prohibited act is it's the same sort of behavior that would. That would lead to the removal of a kind of commission and judge or other county officer. So uh uh I didn't think so, it doesn't uh affect any particular E S D. It, I think it's uh should be something that we do just every year uh so that we have that power. Uh without fashion and everybody uh is, or at least it's transparent enough for everybody to have seen that, so. I would ask for approval here. Make a motion to approve.
We got a motion from Bruce, second from Leon, further discussion. All three say aye. Likewise, names. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Of course, number twenty two is in uh move to executive session. Uh at this time. I believe that does complete everything we have on here. As far as regular business, I would ask the court uh. To move an exact session, I will need a motion and a second. Motion Leon, was that a second, Bruce?
Yes.
All three say aye. All right, it's now. Yeah, we need about a ten minute break. Uh, okay. And we're out of executive session back into regular session. First item to be considered is uh. From Mr. C, where we were discussing uh. The consideration and approve the extension of the contract for solid waste collections for one year. Uh with our uh. Current contract holder. Uh what is the court's pleasure at this point?
I make motion that we uh authorize the county attorney to discuss the uh. On the items that we. Or presented.
Operator's account concerning to.
All right, that is a. That was to authorize county attorney's office to negotiate. Uh terms contract with the current provider, correct?
That is the conditions. Okay, we're good.
All right, and that was a motion from Greg.
Second.
Second from Bruce. All three say aye. Likewise, next. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. That was number twelve. I'm going through the numbers that we had previously set off. To move into executive session. Uh number twenty. Uh consider and approve retroactive overtime compensation under the Fair Labor. Sanders Act for Liberty County Precinct two deputy constable for duties performed as a canine handler. We did discuss this at length. Uh what is the court's pleasure at this time?
I make the motion. I make the motion we approve. Uh the terms set for by the county attorney's office and the complaint.
Second.
Motion from Leon, second from Bruce. Any further discussion?
Um what complaint? What?
Actually, it was authorized as a tender and offer to the constable for payment. Uh I believe of.
Compensation.
Compensation.
I got it. I got it. And so Leon and then who was second?
Bruce.
Great, okay.
Further discussion? All three say aye. Likewise, names. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. I'll move to number three because it was a little bit quicker. Um. That is on the executive session section. Uh county attorney Matthew Poston received advice from county attorney. Uh regarding potential claim by E T and T for damages to cables installed under the county right of way at precinct three. This is more or less an information only item.
That's correct.
So there should be no action taken.
I don't need any action.
I need uh.
Motion, take no action.
Yeah, a motion from Bruce. Uh second from David. Uh any further discussion? All three say aye. Likewise, names. And that motion does carry. Now, number twenty two. Uh from Mr. Poston. Um. Consider and approve grant of authority to county attorney's office. To discuss with legal firms their possible retention. By Liberty County to defend local control against state conservatorship.
Thank you, motion we approve.
Got a motion from Leon, second from Greg, with further discussion? There about hearing none, call for a vote. All three say aye. Likewise, names. And that motion does carry. That was it. David, all three say aye. We are adjourned.